And referring to the agenda, which is nicely laid out separately. It doesn't look like there's anybody online for a forum. Is there, Joanne? Or is there anybody that submitted anything for open forum?
There is none.
Okay. I would like to commend the format of the minutes. They were very complete and very informative for anybody who might look at them. I'd like a motion to accept the minutes as received.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes of the November 18, 2020, regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
And Kennedy seconds. Are there any questions, additions, or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll just call the question on the minutes.
Jan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
And Kennedy?
Yes. Okay. Let's go to the Director's Report. I'd like to have a motion to accept the Director's Report.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve of the Executive Director's Report.
You need a second? Somebody?
I will second.
Linda seconds. Joanne, would you like to add anything to the report that we received?
I would. I have just a couple of updates. One update is I wanted to make you all aware that we do have one eviction that is pending right now. It is for non-payment. And I know this is kind of a hot topic right now, but this individual has on a fixed income, was not affected by COVID, refused to sign the CDC declaration and return it to us, did not apply for K E P P funds, did not apply for funds elsewhere, has not paid rent since April, except for she did make one $1,000 payment. Her rent is $560 a month. And has been just rather uncooperative despite several attempts to advise her various resources and pleading to get her to come in and make a repay agreement with us, to apply for some assistance, to turn in her CDC declaration, to do something. I have not signed off on the, or I don't sign off on it, but I have not approved the journal or the motion for journal entry yet. So it has not actually been filed yet. I suspect by time I get it reviewed and back to the Attorney's Office, that there will not be, it won't be heard until after the first of the year anyway. But I wanted to make you aware of that, just because it could become, you may hear some comments about it in the community if it gets around. There is another case in the community that's been quite verbal on Facebook and has the action of some advocacy groups right now. And we have been, by the way, trying to help that couple.
Good. I'm glad to hear that because my heart just goes out to them. But all the suggestions that people have offered, I haven't, and I'm just talking about what I see on Facebook. But the suggestions and the recommendations that people offer, she does, this woman doesn't seem to follow up on, and I'm sorry about that. Anyway, that's off to the other topics.
It appears that the no eviction thing is included in the so-called negotiated agreement that the houses, both houses are supposed to vote on, but it doesn't sound like this one falls under that she needs help and she's, and she's trying to do something about that. So does she understand that if she's evicted in January, that she has to move?
Well, I would assume she understands that. I mean, we have sent her a letter. We've sent her several letters. We sent her a late notice every month since August when, when the federal moratorium ended and let her know how much she owed. She, I mean, that's what eviction means, is that you have to move.
Is she there? Is she there in the high-rise or one of your other units?
No, she's in the F eight type property.
Okay, good. All right.
Okay.
She's a tax credit tenant. She's not a subsidized tenant.
Oh, okay. All right.
Have you touched base with M A H P? Or is that, do they, is this totally us and not them?
Well, I generally don't contact them and get their input before we evict from there.
Okay, gotcha. All right, cool.
I could gladly send Jill an email and let her know that this is happening. You know, the, the property struggles enough as it is, and we can't afford to have people living there for free.
No. No, it sounds like you've done all the right things, so.
Especially after you've checked off all of the entire process.
Yeah.
Sometimes you have no choice.
Multiple times.
Well, let us know if she figures it out. Yeah, she may feel like, oh, they're not really going to do it, but.
Yeah, well, we did get an email from her saying that she's not clear how much she owes. And the letter we sent her clearly shows what she owes and for what. And that I've done nothing but threaten her and I'm not even, I'm not personally sure. I've signed off on letters that were sent to her, but.
Did you reply to the email and tell her again?
Patrick, Patrick, yeah, she sent it to me. Actually, she sent it to Patrick and Patrick copied me on his.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm really sorry to hear that, but it sounds like people have to be responsible for their own behavior at some point.
At some point, they do. You know, if, if it was truly COVID-related and, and there were some circumstances, we would be more than happy to work with her. But it, you know, we have offered repay agreements, I don't know how many times, to all of the tenants who were, who were behind. And almost all the other tenants who were behind went out and, and found some assistance or got into a repay agreement or managed to get caught up or made some kind of effort at least to do so. And that just hasn't been the case here.
You can answer this without violating any of her privacy items. Is there any reason why you think that she wouldn't have taken advantage of any of those suggestions? Is there anything that we're aware of?
Nothing.
If you can't answer it, that's okay.
Nothing that I'm aware of. And that's, that's kind of the thing. And, you know, we have expressed to all of the tenants and all of our communications to them, that communication is key. You know, you have to communicate with us and let us know what's going on and what your needs are, or we can't help you.
Do you think our methods of communication are something that are limiting to any of our tenants? Or do you think there's any reason that she would feel or this individual would feel that, that there was a limitation that they couldn't, couldn't communicate with us effectively?
I, I don't think so. And, you know, it's apparently been effective with the other tenants that we have communicated with because they managed to go out and utilize the resources and the tools that we provided them or contact us or what have you. So I, I, I don't know, but.
Is it possible that the person is affected by COVID through some mental health restrictions that we're not possibly considering or whether or not we could even consider that?
I, I don't know how that would affect her. To our knowledge, she is not disabled. She has not declared herself, so.
Okay.
Is anybody actually talking to her or are we just sending notices?
Patrick has talked to her, I believe.
Okay, all right, good, okay.
Okay.
Jan, I have a question about the three-line paragraph at the bottom of page one. It says about the water line and on the 12th floor. Does the builder, was the water line involved in the reconstruction at all? Is there any kind of warranty? I mean, we're only in like year two, three maybe, since it's been renovated. Just like you had a Johnson Controls warranty, I wondered if there was some kind of a warranty about.
Yeah, the warranty on work was for one year.
Okay.
The warranty on equipment is a little bit longer.
So that was by the construction company then?
Yeah, that would have been Central Mechanical.
That would be expensive for, to repair all seven floors, repaint and maybe do wallboard or so, okay, I just.
Do we have any kind of insurance?
I'd hate to have that happen.
We do, we do have insurance. The maintenance guys were actually able to clean up the water and fix the, the line. That's the second line that, that we have found that way. One was on the ground floor from the roof drain. And water was just pouring in on the ground floor from the roof drain. And then this one was found on the 12th floor. And I think the water only went down to the, I want to say the fifth floor. Okay, that's still seven floors.
Is that something we can still talk to the contractor about? Just let them know that this is happening? And maybe they might want to do something or, or at least know that that's happening very quick, you know, this soon after it was done?
I think it would be important to lay a paper trail. I think Livy's right.
Okay, I can let them know. I, I did it just because I knew they weren't going to come back and repair it under warranty.
I know, but I just think, well, anyways.
Is there any way of having them come and check the system? Just do a general check to see if there's a problem growing?
They would have to open every wall.
Okay.
We just know how.
If the quality thing and it's recurring, then I'd like them to know. And I would like future people on staff to know about this contractor and that this issue happened with this contract.
Yeah, and it may also be good for the general contractor to know.
Yeah. I agree.
In case they.
Since this is the second time, you know, the second problem.
Has a third party offered any suggestion on, on their thoughts on what, what is causing this? If it is a, a quality issue and if it is something that we should pursue looking deeper into or any, you know, I think the steps that we've suggested, notifying them, letting them know what's happening, giving them an opportunity to make the, try to do some of the repair for us. But is there anybody else, any third party that has given us any indication of if this is something that we should pursue further action on? I mean, this is a big expense and seems like it could be setting us up for additional issues.
No, the, the only other third party would be the general contractor. They were a subcontractor to the general.
Okay. Okay, so, so I guess we're suggesting that a letter go to the general contractor and to the subcontractor so that we have a paper trail that we've now had two problems, two pretty serious problems of flooding based on their work.
It turns out.
I think that's the summary of what we're saying, right?
It turns out.
Oh, go ahead, Linda.
I was just saying, it turns out to be a major distraction and expense from the mission that we're on, which is a really tight and concentrated effort to be more financially viable, having things like this happen. And it portends happening again. And it's expensive.
I, I think in the hierarchy, so we contracted with the general contractor. So I think our correspondence goes to the general. And then the general needs to deal with the sub.
I think you should carbon copy the subcontractor.
And I would ask specifically if there's, if there's a commonality between the issues since it's happened more than once within the building.
Yeah, it was the same thing. The pipe, there's a pipe and there's a boot, and it was not seated in that boot tightly. Like, your pipe should be straight up and down. And the pipe was kind of a little bit off this way. And so it wasn't, there was a gap there and enough water ran down until it just kind of worked that pipe, until it just came loose from the, the boot.
So is that problem solved?
Yeah, the problem is, so it's been fixed. Our maintenance guys were able to fix it.
So that's what I'm asking is who identified that being the problem? Was it our maintenance guys or was it a third party?
No.
Or was it them? So our maintenance guys, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Ours, yes.
So what I would suggest is, and it's already been corrected?
Yes.
I would suggest that if, if it happens again, that we have a, a third-party contractor come and take a look at it so that we can start documenting that this is a consistent issue and have a third-party identify, especially somebody that's in that industry, identify a reoccurring problem with the installation of the pipes that created, that's creating this. Because that would be indicative that they didn't do their work correctly or they were negligent in doing their work so that we can make sure that we're, we are not just us against them. If we have a third party in their industry that's able to identify that, it would probably be worth it to us.
Gotcha.
Did Mike take pictures? By any chance, did Mike take pictures?
I think he did. I'm not positive.
Okay, check and make sure that if he did, that they're on file with any paperwork.
We just know how much damage water can do in that building every time. I don't want to live through that ever again. And I didn't do it. You guys lived through it. I didn't directly.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussions based on Joanne's report?
On COVID, I, we never hear if there are any employees or clients, residents, that have COVID. Have you had any instances of COVID where you have a positive case?
We had, oh, probably a handful tell us that they had COVID when we sent out, when we did pest control inspections. We don't know, I mean, we have no confirmation that they did or they did not. We had some that were self-isolating because they may have been exposed.
So there's, there's no requirement for them to tell you.
Right. We've had no employees that have had positive COVID.
Okay.
We've had a couple of scares, but everything turned out well, so.
Okay, all right, good, thanks. I'm also really interested in the paragraph under miscellaneous about the city of Manhattan, including the housing authority in their audit, being told to do that by the city, uh, city finance department. So my, from what I, and when I hear from Ron Fear, what I hear from you is that the housing authority is totally separate from the Manhattan, from the city of Manhattan. And I, but here we have, we're being, housing authorities being tied back into the city with regard to their audit, which implies there's something, some kind of a tie here. And I recently asked Ron Fear to dig out the documents from when the two separated. And there, he, he told me there is no severance agreement or no, nothing, just a couple of references in minutes. Do you have anything like that?
There's resolutions. There's actually an ordinance.
Is there?
I can get it to you.
I, I would like to see that. Thank you.
And we all know that Linda's going to become the mayor in, in January, right?
No, I'm not.
You're not?
When, when Butler will be mayor in January.
Oh, okay. I thought it was you.
I'll be mayor in 2022.
Okay, my, mine to stay.
No, it's okay. I, it's easy.
Matt, I have a question regarding the heat pumps. The heat pumps that are failing, is it an unusually large number or is it relatively small number?
Well, I, I know there's two that are down right now. And they have told us they're going to cover those two. There's another one that we had to replace. But, I mean, it wasn't, it had to be replaced. We couldn't wait on it.
Can they go back and reimburse us for it?
Well, we're waiting to hear about that.
Okay.
And there's been several, several that they've had to recharge with Freon. And Freon is expensive. And so we're kind of waiting to hear about those.
That's, that's an ongoing issue. I mean, Freon isn't supposed to leak out, but I mean, it does get used up and it has to be recharged.
But it shouldn't, not this soon.
No.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so either. I'd certainly bring it up with Johnson Controls. And on both of these issues, that and the water, it may be worth to, to at least run those by our attorney to see if he believes there's any grounds for considering some kind of, some kind of action or at least let him know what's going on and we could plan for the future if something like that happens again.
Yes. If, if there's, if, if those heat pumps are going out, we need to get this taken care of while they're still under guarantee, warranty or whatever.
I, I completely understand. We're, we're working on it. Linda, I wanted to go back to your question about the city and the Manhattan Housing Authority.
Yeah.
The housing authority and the city will always in some way be linked together because the city, under state law, the city created the housing authority.
Right.
And the city appoint.
The board.
The board. And the city has to have, and, and the housing authority have to have a memorandum of agreement or understanding. I'm not sure which it's called. And I can send you those documents.
I would like that. I asked Ron for them and he sent me a couple of things, but it's not the comprehensive. I, I just want to better understand the connection.
Yeah. And the other connection is that when we separated, the city agreed to allow the housing authority to continue on with the city benefits.
Right.
So.
And we owe them a million dollars.
Yeah.
Now we owe them a million dollars. So there, there, in the past was, for years, a conversation with, every year with Bernie Hain.
Hain.
Hain regarding the audit. And it was always a push to get the audit, get the audit then, get the audit then. And I think a lot of times they ended up having to use our unaudited financial statements. But it was so that they could apply for their award, their, their excellence award in financial reporting. And it, with, with our schedules, our audit schedules, it never, it was always just, it missed if they got it or not. And in our, in our meeting on the day we met via Zoom, Jason expressed how very, very important it is to the city to start getting that award. Maybe they get extra funds if they get that award. I don't know.
I think it has to do with their bond rating.
Okay, okay.
And so it's to their advantage how much the interest they have to pay. I, I'm not, I, I don't just get involved in that high city finance level stuff.
So it seems to me that we have solved the audit problem and we are now getting proper documentation and our audits are, our audit came in better this, more timely this past year?
Oh, no, it's much later than usual this, for last year.
But we have, we have a new auditor now?
Well, it's the same one we've used for the last three or four years.
We have a new fee accountant in the last.
Okay, and they're not related?
No.
Oh, okay.
Let me ask you, audit-wise, the city is saying that you are now a component of the city's audit. So do you have to, does this organize, does the housing authority have to afford a separate audit?
No, but what, what Jason.
Or can we ride along with the city's audit?
Jason and I talked about maybe having the same company that does the city's audit do our audit at the same time. There'll be a little coordination required there to, as for timing and what have you. But Jason, Jason didn't make any promises or guarantees, but he suggested that this is so important to them that they may even be willing to, to spring the cost of the housing authority's share of the audit. Hey, that would be helpful.
That'd be good.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to know. That might mean that we would not have to afford the separate independent audit that we've been having to, to do. And we would be able to align our audit and finances with the city's audit timeline then, it sounds like?
Hopefully, hopefully. And, you know, years and years ago, before we had to submit our, our financials online, when we were considered a, a component unit of the city, Varney and Associates did the audit for the, the city of Manhattan. And they would come over here and do a portion of the, their portion of the audit over here. We didn't have a separate auditor from the city until we separated. And that stopped when we had to start submitting our financials online. Then Barney was just not. It was a complicated process then because it was brand new and there's this crosswalk guide and it was just kind of a nightmare for them. And.
Okay, I don't.
So anyway, then at some point Bernie had convinced the, well, I will say he convinced them, he and the auditors agreed that we're really not a component unit of the city because we're such a small, little drop in the bucket on their financials. And now the new auditor and financial consultants apparently disagree with that and determined that we are a component unit. So as much as we can.
Is this something you have to report to HUD? Because we have to turn our audit over to them.
No.
Oh, we just, okay.
As long as our audit.
Has no findings.
As long as our audit is in compliance with housing authority audit.
Yeah.
Requirements and, you know, any auditor can read those requirements and, and know what it is they need to do.
So you don't know those. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I hate to cut this short, but we have a lot of things on our agenda tonight and it's already 10 after seven, after six.
I have just a couple more things to mention.
Okay, quickies.
We, we did have a conversation today with, well, I did not have a conversation. Mindy had a conversation yesterday with our new financial analyst at HUD. He has suggested that the housing authority approach the city and ask if they would be interested and willing to forgive our 2019 and 2020 pilot payments to help our financials. I'd like to hear any thoughts from you all about that.
How much, how much money are we talking about?
A million dollars.
No. No, that's not the pilot payment. That's not the pilot. No, that's not the pilot payment. That's not the pilot payment, Linda. That's something else.
Can I say that when we originally were talking about the the loan from the city, this was a possibility that was put out there and discussed openly with our board, but also with the city in that discussion as something that could potentially be a backup plan if cash flow was was tight for us, which it is. And and historically, it's always been discussed and Joanne, I'll let you speak to this point, but it's always been discussed that that would be a potential ask that would be reasonable for us to make. So I'm under the understanding that this isn't out of line to request and probably would be in our best interest to at least talk to the city about. You know, it's different administration now, so it's hard to say exactly what their thought might be. But at the same time, it's it's something that has been openly discussed both as a board and with the city. So it shouldn't be a complete surprise to anybody.
Many, many, many cities forgive their pilots and their housing authorities. It's not an unusual thing to happen.
How much is the pilot loan then?
It's not a loan.
It's not a loan.
It's payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Of course it is. Okay, pilot payment in lieu of taxes.
So Linda, our last year's pilot was 21,532. And this year so far, we owe 23,614, but that will fluctuate up a little bit after December.
Okay.
Tenant rents are calculated and end of year stuff is done.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
So I I guess I would like some direction from the board as to would you like me to broach the subject with Ron or Jason or or whomever? Would you like a a letter from the board chair to go to the city? Would you like me to schedule a meeting with the city? What what's the board's desire?
Well, based on what Jamie said, that we've discussed this before and we've discussed it with the city before. I would say the quick and dirty thing to do would be to send a letter that I'd be happy to sign with the background information in it of the previous discussions to, and then ask them if they want to meet or what they want to do about it.
I think we should have a conversation with them first and just have a quick meeting with Ron and Jason and ask them ask them what they'd like to see so that we can make sure what we do present, which probably will be a letter, is concise and formatted in a way that they can just get it through if they do think that it's something that they would be amicable to. And I don't think there's any reason they wouldn't be and they shouldn't be caught off guard. They might not be supportive of it for various reasons, but they shouldn't be caught off guard by it. And I don't think it's anything that they should be offended by. It's it's their way of demonstrating support. I mean, that's the whole pilot. That's why we don't pay taxes. Payment in lieu of taxes is a program specifically to allow this potential if if needed, I believe. So it's something that I I think a conversation first. So we don't just blindside them with a letter asking for something that they might not quite know why we're asking at this moment, or they might jump to some conclusions or assumptions based on it.
So Ron, Jason and the Director of Finance, Tammy Galvin, invite her to the meeting.
Sure, whoever they want to be there. I don't know.
Jamie, would you be willing to sit in on such a meeting?
I'd be happy to. I don't know that it's necessary, but yeah, I'd be happy to. I mean, like I said, it's it's kind of just a continuation of of the loan discussions we had. And I think, Joanne, you've had numerous discussions with them in prior years about this as well as not as an ask, but as a potential if needed.
I did, but it was with Bernie for the most part. I think maybe it may have been mentioned when Ron or and or Jason were in the meetings when we were in that whole loan discussion. But mostly with Bernie. Bernie was totally us. That money's nothing to us. Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
If you have anything of that means in writing, I'd say we'd
It's a different time now and.
I know.
The city lost a lot of revenue too, and we recognize that, so.
I don't think, I don't think the city's in the same mood.
Yeah.
I don't think his.
Anybody's in the same mood.
His replacement is not that of that mind, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so that's what we're suggesting. And Jamie's suggestion is a good one. We'll have some kind of conversation or a meeting of some kind that Joanne will figure out. And if Jamie can join that conversation, that'd be great. Anything else that we need to discuss? And Joanne's report.
Just one more little thing. Well, actually two more. Mandy will touch more on them in her report, but the, our EPC loan has been sold from PMC Bank to Huntington Bank. I think I may have mentioned that last month. Mandy has been in touch with them. We are working hard to see if A, it can be refinanced to reduce the payments since the interest rates are so low right now. And B, to see if we can reschedule the timing of those payments so our ended, so it doesn't hit our end of year cash to help boost our scores up a little bit at the end of the year. So that Mandy will talk more about that. And then our action plan with HUD. It's my understanding that they are in the process of getting it uploaded into whatever systems they need to. And we'll be able, that's a good thing because it will enable us to access the second increment of the shortfall funding, which is another $91,000, which when Mandy gets to operating budget revision, you will see how that will be a a nice addition to our budget, but she'll talk about that more there. But I just want you to know that it's it's almost, apparently it's been approved. I haven't seen the approved document. And it's being uploaded into their system. We do have a call tomorrow with the mayor in that regard. Linda, you're on that call, right?
And Ron Fear.
And Ron, okay.
And the discussion is what is the city's role? So that may be why Jason was interested in pursuing the audit. I don't know. Haven't.
I don't, I think it's completely separate.
If it makes sense in that discussion, I would bring up the pilot payment in that discussion. I think that that it all flows together under the same same discussion point. And so I would bring it up in that discussion to ask if it makes sense.
We actually asked the, our new financial person, Pete, Peter Reeves, if he would be interested in maybe mentioning that from a HUD standpoint, that it would be helpful rather than us coming in saying it would be helpful or to kind of, I guess, confirm the request the way that it would help us to to up our score. But HUD does not want to get involved in that request, so.
No, they wouldn't. But I do think if you're meeting with Ron and the city in regard to our overall financing and and connectivity to the city, that would be a very appropriate conversation to just go ahead and talk about the pilot payment and and ask, I mean, if it was, I don't know why you wouldn't. I guess is what I'm asking.
It may be. I mean, we may, kind of depends on how the discussion goes and maybe we can get it on the table in front of the city manager and the mayor at the same time.
Yeah, it's up to you. I guess I would just say if the opportunity came up, that it probably would not be the wrong venue to have that discussion in. So I wouldn't wait for a separate meeting if it made sense in that meeting.
I agree. And I just saw today and haven't even had a chance to completely read through it, but apparently there's some kind of a, an agreement that we have to sign with regard to completing the action plan. And the mayor also has to sign it, so.
And it's taken, I'd just like to point out, it's taken three months to make this happen.
Well, I'd like to point out that the mayor and the city manager know nothing, have known nothing about it when I asked them. And so.
About.
About, the mayor knew nothing. She was being called by Mr. Martin at HUD to make an appointment. He wanted to talk to her on the phone. And she didn't have a clue what to even tell him.
She got a copy of the letter, the same letter that 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 you got.
She was copied on all the documents that they sent us.
That was months ago. She doesn't, she is not up to speed on what this housing authority is doing, is what I'm telling you. And she called me and said, what's going on? And I asked Ron Fear to call this Mr. Martin about what the city's role is in this and how are we tied in to, anyway, I'm just saying there's some fumbling going on because the perception was that the city no longer had responsibility for the housing authority. And that the housing authority was running itself independently. And now we find ourselves in financial trouble and, oh, we need to go back to the city now. And I'm just trying to figure out what.
It's because the city appoints the board.
I know, I know the city appoints the board.
Well, it's it's beyond that. I mean, we just spent a lot of time discussing the the fact that we're involved in, like they review our financials, they appoint, the city appoints the board. And in all states, when a housing authority is in a troubled situation, the city is notified and included in that conversation. And if there's liability, the city is included in the settlement and payment out of housing authority problems financially. So I I think it's something that the city is involved. It just is a a matter of how how the oversight works. And and Linda, I think you're you're a representative on behalf of the city.
That I have a thorough understanding of this and I don't.
It definitely would be important and that's essential. And I think that we're all, we're all appointed by the city for different roles within the community and different reasoning. And so I think that's where, I mean, the city does have a connection here. That's without a doubt.
I guess, I guess I have a curiosity as to why, I guess I didn't realize that Usha was so confused or Ron, and why they did not reach out to me. I could have easily scheduled a Zoom meeting with everyone.
I, it's, you know, I don't run the world. I don't know.
Linda, isn't part of the reason we have a commissioner in here so you can relay stuff back to the mayor too? So we need to make sure you really know, you have some concrete information to update her with.
I I keep Ron Fear and Usha informed by forwarding them our agenda and our minutes and running a flag up the pole. I mean, I've told them and they have, they received, Usha received that troubled housing authority letter before many of us did. I mean, it's just, it's disconnected. It's nothing, it's just not well oiled.
Well, let's just say Usha has a lot on her plate.
Yeah.
And if she put this on her back burner, that's understandable. But if we're now, if you guys are now going to have this meeting to talk about this, that should solve that problem.
Usha expects me as the commissioner, that's the liaison with this board, to be able to explain it. And we've not, as a board, been given all enough information that I could even do that. And and gradually, there are pieces of information coming together that. Anyway. The pieces are filling in, but not because I knew them or have had a briefing from either the city or the housing authority. Anyway, we need to move on. Tomorrow's meeting will take care of itself.
I don't want to drag this out and it might be a conversation for another meeting specifically tomorrow's. I think it must be for your meeting tomorrow with the city, but generally speaking, Linda, you just kind of made a pretty big statement there. And I I really appreciate hearing specifically what specifically it is you feel that you haven't received information on. And I ask that not to put you on the spot and I don't want to put you on the spot. I ask that so that we can make sure that we're clear in understanding what the actual issue is. Is it the financials? Is it the what is the specific issue that you feel is is lacking in information?
It is that, it it is that I've been told consistently that the only relationship between the housing authority and the city is that they continue to receive capers and health insurance and I don't know what else. Benefits, employee benefits, and that there's a commissioner that serves on this board. And I am a liaison and I do keep them informed, but I don't, there's not. Anyway, those are the basics of what I knew about the relationship. Ever get out of anybody.
All right, can I suggest this? What what time is the meeting scheduled for tomorrow?
I want to say two, but I'm not positive about that.
Okay, can Linda and Joanne have a conversation prior to that two o'clock meeting? To help answer any of Linda's questions so that when you have the meeting, that Linda feels more comfortable?
Tomorrow's meeting is at two.
Linda, can you talk to Joanne, have a phone conversation or some kind of a conversation? Like at 1:30 for a little while prior to that meeting to help you feel more comfortable? Joanne, can you do that?
Sure.
What time, Linda?
I don't care.
Do you want me to, do you want to do a Zoom or you just want to do tele?
A phone call, fine. I don't need anything fancy.
Do you want me to call you at 10?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, hopefully that'll solve the problem.
And I think Linda's question is important, but it it sounds like it's also a topic that isn't just within our board, but the city is having some of the same questions right now. It sounds like in terms of lack of clarity and what the relationship currently is because of the documentation and everything previously. So it it might be good to follow up and make sure that the rest of the board understands that relationship once it's clarified. I don't think we need to be involved in the back and forth of any of that discussion, but.
Yeah, and I know those documents have been buried in their vault somewhere for quite some time because that separation happened back 20 years ago. I don't think Ron was even city manager then.
So if you have the resolution and stuff, you should get that, pull that out. Yeah, make that, make sure that you have that available for the conversation as well.
Really two of each one because the the separation was delayed for some period of time because everything wasn't ready to go on both ends, but, okay.
Okay. Are we done with the director's report?
I think so.
Let's call the question.
Jan.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Livy.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Kennedy's missing.
Phil.
Hi, Phil says yes.
Yes. Kennedy says yes. Key, so. I'm sorry. Okay, I need a motion to accept the financial reports as received.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the financial reports.
Need a second?
Second.
Livy, second. Mandy, you want to do a verbal?
Sure. I won't go through each variance tonight because that will be in the 2020 revision that we talked about. But I do want to make you aware. Um, but I do want to make you aware on the statement of net position. It's labeled as page three of nine. You'll see an accounts receivable on there from the section eight department in the FHI public housing, um, program. I was home on the 30th ill and I was trying to get this transfer done on the 30th so it would show on the books. When I tried to do it online four times, the bank kept graying out um, the 30th, the first and the second for me to transfer. So I had to wait until December 3rd to transfer that money over. But that AR is no longer on the books as of December the 3rd.
Is that number 1129.07, accounts receivable dash vouchers?
Yeah, 112907 and then 112903. So both of those have been taken care of as of December the 3rd.
Okay. Let the minutes show that.
As far as variances go, we literally have the same variances that we have from last month. And the majority of those variances are how the fee accountant reports 2019 expenses that are paid in 2020. She puts them directly on the line item that they go to. And then when it comes December 31st and I send her information in January, she then either adds more expenses or takes those expenses out and moves them into the accounts payable area. So, um, I will be discussing with her starting in January if there's a way that we can back those out so we have an accurate budget to present to the board. It's accurate expense wise, but it's not accurate when it comes to, these are really 2020 expenses.
Okay.
On the bottom of that page, uh, item four and five from the bottom, it says compensated absences current and compensated absences non-current. And the same financial value is ascribed to both entries.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, so the current ones would be, um, if, I'll, I'll take Joanne for instance. So let's say Joanne was retiring December 31st. The current compensated absence that show on the books would be what our liability is for the staff members who would leave in that, um, year. It's not a full amount and that's why you see it separated exactly because she'll put it into current and then non-current, she'll put it on that side as well. But that is the true number that if, if our staff would have left us as of the end of last year, this would have been what we would have had to pay out.
It just looked suspicious since it was the same amount. Thank you.
Um, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I guess, is there any questions on the financials that I can answer? Because I'll go way more in detail when we get to the budget revisions.
And that's part of, same part of this report, right?
Yeah. So when you get your, well, it's not part of the financial reports, but.
Okay.
Um, so when you get your December, um, financial reports, you'll notice that the annual budget line item numbers will be totally different than what they are for November because she'll get the budget revision and put those numbers in. So when you get the reports in, uh, January for December, you'll see those variances come down tremendously, the high one.
All right.
So I don't know.
Until we get to the.
I don't know if this directly relates to, um, to the financials, but could you just really briefly, if possible, elaborate on anything that pertains to our, um, our scoring? Is it the FAS score? I don't, I never know which, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Can you just really quickly summarize any, any relative like fluctuations that make a material difference in that scoring for us?
Sure. So, um, every month I send a spreadsheet to our, um, financial HUD reps. He looks over what I submit him compared to what is in the financial reports that I send. Um, I just spoke with him before we came into board meeting and he told me the numbers I submitted look correct. Um, and so he told me I could go ahead and present those numbers to you guys. Um, so I will go down the list. Um, the quick ratio is it went from 112 last month to 116. That's the ratio. Uh, the score went from 7.79 to 7.97. Our months, our months expendable fund balance, which is known as the mean R. Um, we're currently sitting at zero points there. Um, I think in order to get full points there, we have to be at least up to 0.75. And right now we're only at 0.28 for that line item. Uh, debt service coverage ratio, uh, we're not getting any points there at all. And that ratio score is negative 105. And I believe in order to have any points in that area, we have to have a positive one. And right now we're sending in a negative 105.
That's 1.05.
Yeah. So our total FAS points we earned this month were 7.97. Last month was 7.79. So we went up just a little bit this month. Um, then when you get down to our mass points, we have those scored as well. Our tenant accounts receivable, we're getting the full five points for that. Our accounts payable, we're getting the full four points for that. Occupancy, we're getting no points. Right now we're at, uh, 79%. So total mass points that we, um, have so far for November is nine. And at the beginning of, uh, this year, we only had four points to listen to math. So we're slowly increasing those numbers. Um, our months of operating reserves right now is at two point, or is at 0.28. And, um, when I talk more in the budget, I'll talk about our MOR and how we want to get that up so we can get that, um, third pot of money from HUD for the, uh, shortfall funds that are available. So right now we're setting at 0.28. I did talk with Joanne when I put this spreadsheet together and I ran some numbers and we, um, have kind of figured out, you know, if we can get rid of that pilot and add some more cash in our bank account at 1231, we will be setting at an MOR of 1.01, which is where HUD wants us to be, um, next year in order for us to pull that third pot of money down from the shortfall.
And reschedule the EPC.
And reschedule the EPC payment. So, and I am pretty confident that's going to happen. Um, we've got a phone call with them next week on Monday to discuss some options that they have for us. Um, either refinancing or moving that, that due date to another month. And we, uh, asked them for March and I believe August for the payments. I also asked them, would it be feasible to pay that payment monthly instead of having to chunk out 75,000 every six months? So that's probably another option that they'll talk with us about next week. So, but as of the end of November, that's where we are for our points.
Are those numbers anticipated to be talked about with the city in that discussion tomorrow? Um, just in terms of like Usha's understanding of where the, where the scoring that resulted in the troubled status was versus some of these improvements that you've seen from beginning of the year to current?
I, Jamie, I don't know how to answer that. Um, I was kind of sent an email and said, just FYI, we're meeting with the mayor, we have a Zoom meeting with the mayor and, um, do, 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 you're welcome to join. And then I was just today or yesterday sent, uh, I think it was today actually, sent a copy of the, um, agreement that they'll be discussing for the action plan with a disclaimer that neither the action plan nor the agreement or in final version and final form or had been approved by HUD. And I'm, I'm a little in the dark. I think my impression of this call is that they, the HUD has to make sure that the mayor is aware of the status of the housing authority because she and the city commission are responsible for appointing the commissioners. I know you're tired of hearing that, but they are responsible for appointing the commissioners. And the city is ultimately responsible for unappointing the commissioners if it came to that. I don't think they're looking at that though. Please don't take that.
I think acknowledging to the city that the waiver of the pilot funds would make us eligible for additional funding from HUD would probably go a long way. I think that's something that needs to be conveyed. And, and if possible, we need to demonstrate that numerically to show them that the, the position that that would put us in in our scoring would allow us to qualify for additional funding that would actually pay, we wouldn't pay the city, but would put us in a better position to potentially be a healthier entity for the city going forward.
Yeah. Um, I think we didn't entitle us to more funds than we're already entitled to per se. Would, when they gave us the, remember I talked about the $232,000 shortfall operating subsidy? What they didn't tell us until they actually put this money in our LOX account or we draw it down from was that this fiscal year, we can draw down $51,000. And then once we have an approved action plan with HUD, we can draw down the next $91,000. And then when we, our MOR equals one, um, we can draw down the last $91,000. I'm rounding numbers off here, the last $91,000. So it's kind of like a carrot on string kind of thing.
That's $250,000.
That's 280, no, 200, what'd I say, 232,000. 180,000 plus 50,000. 91 and 91 is 182 and you add 51 to that would be 232.
That's a lot of money.
The flaw in this thinking is that on January 5th, Wynn Butler will be the new mayor. And that action plan isn't, the city is not, is, is, our last meeting was last night. We are not having another meeting until January 5th.
I don't think it has to be approved by the commission, Linda.
Okay, all right. I'm just telling you.
That's something.
You think, you think Usha may not, I think Usha may not be up to speed. If I'm not, she's not, I guarantee it. But I can tell you that Wynn Butler, uh, is not, um, anywhere with regard to the status of the housing authority and will be a. Anyway, just, just saying.
Okay.
We just need to get this figured out is all.
All right. Anything else, Mandy?
No, that's it unless anybody has any questions.
Any other questions on the financial report?
I have just a quick one about that whole carrot on a string thing. We have to have an approved action plan, but isn't that ball in HUD's court right now?
Yes, and we mentioned that to them, like if you guys could get this approved and get it uploaded and do whatever you've got to do, we could draw down that other $91,000. And I, our financials for this year would look one heck of a lot better.
Yeah.
I would think it would be in their interest to help us get our money.
Well, you would think that.
Okay. They're out of our control, clearly. All right, anything else on the financials so that we can approve it and go on? I call the question.
Linda.
Yes.
Jamie. Yes. Jan.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Livy.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes. I, I would just admonish the, uh, secretary to make sure that all that conversation is in the notes like you did last month. You did a great job. Okay, we have no old business, but we have a big, long list of new business. First item, I need a resolution to approve the 2020 operating budget revision.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve resolution number 121620-A adopting the 2020 operating budget revision for the Manhattan Housing Authority.
I need a second.
I second.
Linda seconds and Mandy, let's have you discuss this with us.
Sure. Um, so, boy, this was an interesting budget to have to do to say the least with all the unknowns that we have, um, happening in this month. So if we do get that 90, that 90,000 additional funds that we can pull down, we'll probably need to revise this budget again. Um, I put numbers based off of what I knew was accurate and true. I didn't want to overstate the budget, give any false information, um, or add money to the budget that, that would make the housing authority look better if we weren't for sure that's what we were going to get.
Okay.
So pretty much we're seeing an increase in, uh, dwelling rental due to an increase in occupancy. Uh, we're seeing an overall decrease from HUD receipts of 51,696. Uh, the majority of those two decreases are due to MHA not receiving the CMC for 2020. And then, um, oh, CMC is changing market conditions for 2020. We first budgeted, um, to receive that and then later found out, I think in March or April that we weren't approved for that. So $91,000 less in operating subsidy than we, um, had officially budgeted last November. Uh, the other big line item is, um, when we budgeted for 2020 in November of last year, we were under the impression that we could pull almost $200,000 down for capital fund operations and put it into our operating fund. We later found out about the same time of the CMC that, um, troubled housing authorities can only pull down 20% into operations. So that was a big decrease there as well for our income. Um, you'll see a lot of, uh, differences on this budget because I went back and matched up what our budget is to our SDS that we submit to HUD each year. So, um, there is some differences there in the other revenue category. But, um, from what we budgeted last year for 2020 to what I'm revising now, we've received almost 24,000 more in other income than we have projected for 2020. So overall, uh, decrease in operating revenue of only $3,100, which is not that bad at all when you take in to affect how much money we lost in operating revenue. Um, I'll, I'll touch on the big ones here. Um, admin salaries did go up $12,000 when we budgeted in November. I didn't, not realize there was going to be 27 payroll periods this year because our payroll, uh, would have fell on January 1st, but we have to back that up to December 31st because the bank is not open on January the 1st. So that's the major increase there in admin salaries. Um, let's see, administrative salaries when it comes to CARES Act and that'll be discussed more in the Cola and Merit section of the board packet. Um, but that's something that Joanne and I worked together on to give to staff for 2020. Um, our audit is now, we paid that out of CARES Act funds. So of course it shows a credit on the line item of audit, but it shows that an expense on the CARES Act side of it. Our benefits went up about $6,800 and that was just because we had other staff that were on single plans that when we hired new staff to take over their. that were on single plans that when we hired new staff to take over their positions, they elected family plan. And there's a huge difference money wise between a single plan and a family plan when it comes to the employer's portion for us. Um, you know, the office expenses when it comes to publications, membership dues, telephone, those all are showing decreases and the majority of that is with publications. We are utilizing a new policy revision service and that saved us a little bit of money this year. Um, we did less memberships this year than we did the prior year because of COVID. Those really cut down. We have a new telephone service now that we're utilizing that saved us a little bit of money in 2020. Admin service contracts really went up this year, but the majority of that is due to the new website. $8,500 was paid for the new website to be done. We added KBI access. We were utilizing tenant PI through our Lindsay software system and we found out that it wasn't as accurate as KBI. And so we switched to KBI so we could have more accurate background checks for applicants.
How much does one cost, Mandy?
A KBI check, $20.
Oh, $20. Okay. That's minor. All right. Thanks.
Yeah.
Comes out of tenants. It's quite a bit.
Yeah. Forums, stationary and office supplies went up, 2,000 of that was to help staff get ready to telework. We thought maybe we could utilize the CARES Act money to reimburse ourselves for that. And we found out that if we bought anything before March 27th, we could not utilize the CARES Act funding. So that had to come out of the operating budget, budget to prepare for teleworking at home. Legal expense went drastically down this year. Majority of that is due to COVID and less legal expenses than we had in the prior couple of years for sure. Um, relocation for tenants did a casualty loss went up. This is something that you'll see in 2021. I actually budgeted a little bit money for because it seems like we have each year a little bit of expense for that. Whether there's a water break in their unit and we have to put them in a hotel for a couple of nights till we get that fixed or whether their units tested for mold and we need to relocate them for a little bit until we can get another unit ready for them. So that's what all falls underneath that line. Um, so utilities went down around $21,000 and you know, you'll see sewer costs went up, but you'll see gas and electric went down. And what I really believe of why gas and electric went down is because we're leasing units up. And so when they're not vacant, we don't have that utility expense anymore. On top of the EPC contract, I believe has helped tremendously, especially here on the high rise for sure, with new HVAC system. Sewer did go up. I called over to the city to see if, if there was a big increase that I wasn't aware of. And they did say there was an increase in sewer costs, but I also believe our increase there is we pay, oh, sorry. We pay the sewer on all the units. And so if they're vacant, there's no sewer that goes through them. So when they're occupied, of course, we're going to have an increase in that sewer cost.
They also calculate the sewer based on the water usage. So if your unit, I mean, you don't do it, they don't do it by unit, but as a whole, if there are some vacancies, then there'd be less water use too. But anyway, they're, they're connected.
Yeah. And our, our, our bills do come by unit except for the high rise in Carlson.
Okay. For the big, for the high rises. Okay.
We get each unit's consumption.
Good.
Um, we'll go to labor. Labor is a big one. It increased by $58,000 and the majority of that increase is us utilizing contracts to try to get units turned over to try to get people in. And on the flip side of that, we also had an increase in bed bug treatments and that's not an expense we can pass on to the tenant. That's something that we have to pay for out of our operating budget that we have. Total labor.
Oh, total. Okay.
Um, labor in the staff department did decrease by $10,000. And the main reason for that is we're utilizing the, the rest of the CARES Act funding in this year to pay for a staff member's salary because he's focusing on unit turnover. So that really, I mean, it went down about $10,000, but, um, trying to see what else. We had an increase in snow removal contract and lawn care. I have budgeted in 2021 to bring that cost back down and we're projected to have staff actually start doing some snow removal. We've been working hard on getting all the equipment up to speed, fixed and all the trucks fixed and snow plow blades put on. So we can hopefully not have us, have as much snow removal contract cost there.
And we actually have enough maintenance staff to drive those trucks now.
Yes, we do. Almost have too many.
Are we, are we looking at 2020? This is the revision, right?
Yeah.
Because snow removal is zero.
No. Snow, landscape and grounds that falls under snow removal. I've revised that to 27,000. So it went up 3,000.
I'm looking at 94300-030. So snow removal, zero.
Oh, no. Snow. So lawn, lawn, landscape and grounds and snow removal all get lumped under landscape and grounds.
Are now one. Okay.
Yeah. Because it's all one company.
Yep.
Well, what I was seeing just didn't match what you were saying. So thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Um, total protective services went up $1,800 and that was just increase in fire alarm services. So the fire alarm's going off and it's in troubled status and we can't figure it out. We can't fix it. Of course, we have to call them to come in and that has happened several times this year. So we increased that just a little bit. Total insurance premium went down $9,300. The majority of that is a decrease in our workers' comp premium. We had audits done for our workers' comp insurance like we do every single year and they called me and said, you haven't done an audit in two years. And I'm like, no, we've done an audit. Here's the documentation. So I talked with our rep and he ended up finding us a different company, Liberty Mutual. And it seems to be their rates are a little bit lower than who we were going with before. So there was a decrease in, in the workers' comp insurance. Um, other general expense, you'll see an increase for compensated absences and those are for two staff members that resigned in 2020. I don't usually budget on this line item because I have no idea who's leaving and nor do I want anybody to leave. So that's an increase in expense there and that's their vacation payouts. I increased the payment and low taxes up $7,000 and that's due to an increase in revenue and a decrease in utility expenses. So we're hoping with this talk that we're going to have with the city that maybe that can be waived. But I left it on the budget because as of now we have, we don't know if that's going to happen. Um, we usually budget 5,000 every year for TAR write-offs, so ten and accounts receivable write-offs. When I did the spreadsheet for the board, I upped this budget line item. HUD is really focused on getting our score up. And if we can, if we can write off all of our TARs at the end of the year or as of November 30th, our score will look 10 times better than if we left them on the books. So we did increase that line item by $21,000 in hopes to increase our score for 2020. On the third page, you're going to see an increase of $57,000 for our interest expense. That's just me putting a new line item on the budget so, so we can match up with our FDS submission.
Can I ask a quick question? Not to throw you off track. On the last line item, the, the $21,000, did we run that by your HUD analyst just to make 100% sure that that strategy would be effective?
Yeah. That was a conversation. Yep. Definitely had that conversation with him before I did the budget.
Perfect. I assumed. I just wanted to verbalize that.
Yep. Um, other financial items, it's going to show a decrease of 50,000. That's just because I moved the interest expense up to that new line item on the budget. But the line item of 97,300 on the budget and that last line item on the budget, we're hoping that 77,000 of that can be deferred till 2020 or till 2021. So with all the budget revisions, we, our net cash flow is at 78,097.
In the hole.
In the hole.
But.
But if we can defer the EPC payment with Huntington till next year, that will add $77,000 back into the budget.
Wipe it out. And if we can get our, I'm sorry, were you going to say that?
Yes. And if we, and if we can defer the pilot, that would give us another 24,000 in the budget. So we're kind of almost at a $23,000 positive if all this stuff happens. And if we can get that additional $90,000, we will, on the budget, look really, really good positive wise. So.
And in the bank.
And in the bank.
Do we have any idea of when we would have those funds if, if we had that approval?
We were told they were hoping to have it approved this week. I think it's actually been approved by, because he mentioned they were getting it uploaded into their, whatever system they have to use. I don't know. I don't know what their process is, but they had, they are, the new, the, the financial analyst and the single point of contact both indicated that they are trying really hard to make sure that we can act, it gets approved so that we can access an extra $91,000 before the end of the year to help our score.
That would be nice.
That would be wonderful.
Okay. And are there any other questions? I think Mandy has explained just about everything there is. Does anybody have any questions about anything we've just seen? Can I call the question to approve it?
I just want to point out what a difference the CARES money has made in this budget. What is the total of, the grand total of CARES?
Of CARES Act. The public housing side received 71,293 and FHI received 15,896, I believe.
13. No.
And 88.
No.
And Section 8 received.
Oh, and Section 8 received around 48,000.
Wow.
So it has helped Section 8 pay Manhattan Housing Authority back, which is awesome.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure that we made a note of that because well.
Okay. Can we call the question on this one?
What about expending? Do we have to have the CARES money spent by December 31st? Or do you, can you carry some over into 2021?
We have till June 30th to spend it all.
Okay.
And at the end of December, we in the public housing side will only have around $300 left in CARES Act. Section 8 has used all of theirs. FHI is going to have around $11,000 left in CARES Act funding to use, but we're utilizing that CARES Act funding for our new maintenance guy out there who's doing unit turnover.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. I call the question.
Linda.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Jan.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Livy.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes. Okay. Then I needed, I need a motion on the second item.
Let me turn the page. Chair, I move that we adopt resolution number 121620-B.
Yep. To approve the 21 operating budget.
That would be.
2021 operating budget for the Manhattan Housing Authority Public Housing Program with any modifications required by the fee account accountant upon completion of the operating subsidy calculations.
Second. Somebody?
I second.
Linda seconds. Okay. Mandy, you want to go through?
Dan. Okay. So again, I increased dwelling rental because I'm, I'm projecting that we're going to lease up some units. So we increased that by 53,000.
How many units are you thinking you're going to lease up?
As Patrick supervisor and just doing his evaluation, I have put a pretty stiff goal on him for 2021 and that is to have at least 96% leased by the end of the year.
Thank you. Okay.
And what's not least, as the facility supervisor, uh, or the, I'm sorry, the facilities, which is name.
Facility supervisor.
Facility supervisor supervisor for the next couple of months. And he, maintenance department has been instructed that even if we don't have them leased up, they need to be ready.
Okay. That's the 96% get ready or what, what percent?
96% is leased up.
Yeah. What is the get ready percent?
100%.
Okay. Thank you.
All units to be over within 30 days.
When last did we meet that goal?
It's been a while. Um, well, actually, we were, we were, when did this come in?
2017.
We were pretty caught up in 2017. And then the towers got done. And of course, we emptied out a lot of units in the family site by relocating them back here. And then others moved on their own volition. So we, and we were short on maintenance staff from about that time on. And so they really kind of got piled up, backed up there for a while and it's been very difficult to catch up. But we're getting there.
How realistic is that goal for 2021?
Oh, I think with the maintenance staff that we have on board now, barring any major distractions, we'll call them emergencies, or you know, blizzards or things that take them off track, I think it's very attainable.
And that's despite the amount of units. Well, I mean, I guess we should benefit from the fact that people aren't renting around here. But, okay.
All right. Keep going. Talking Lisa, Ray, Kennedy, or make ready Ray?
I thought it was Lisa.
Okay, Lisa. I think Lisa, Lisa is, make ready is more controllable than Lisa is because we're kind of dependent on the public. I, I, I don't hope to see, but I think we might see an influx in applications once the, the moratoriums expire or more evictions or more landlords are getting bolder with evictions. I don't, I don't really know how to put that because I don't have a crystal ball. But I kind of expect that. I'm, I'm seeing a lot more inquiries from the code department, the CCT committee, from the health department, people that are working with those who are. behind in their RAC, didn't get assistance for whatever reason. I'm thinking our list is going to bolster before too long.
Okay, thank you.
And also say, Kennedy, with the addition of Alyssa in the office, she, she's doing a tremendous job in the office of helping Patrick out with sending OI packets, getting the information, verifying it. So when he literally gets it, he just has to look through it, make sure she's gotten everything from that applicant, and then he's ready to send that move-in letter to them and offer that unit. So she's really been working hard in the public housing department with Patrick to try to get OIs moving a little bit faster and getting people leased up and staying on top of things. So he can kind of focus more on the lease enforcement side of it.
Alyssa's going to be a very valuable person. She's also been kind of trained to work in Section 8 during Kat's maternity leave. Kat is officially gone on maternity leave now, she's not had those babies, but boy, she looks like she's close.
All right. Okay, let's keep going.
All right. Um, so total HUD receipts dropped $9,000, and the majority of that decreases because we, at the end of 2020, will expended all of the, most of the CARES Act money, and all will have less than 331. I did increase the operating subsidy in hopes that if we have an increase in occupancy, we're going to have an increase in operating subsidy as well. We added that second increment of shortfall funds, and if for some reason we can pull that money down in 2020, we still have that third increment of shortfall funds. So really, the budget's not going to change on that line at all, it's still going to have that 90,000. We left the operation money the same because we're still labeled troubled if, if for some reason at the end of 2020, we're not labeled troubled, and we can pull more money down, then we'll do a budget revision so we can pull more money down from there. Admin salaries decreased by 38,000 due to one staff member retiring, on top of not providing merit and COLA increases for 2021, which Joanne will talk about later on in the board packet. I moved audit fees back to the regular line items since we don't have CARES Act funding. We think maybe there might be another pot of money coming for CARES Act, but we did not budget for that at all because we have no idea if that's really going to happen. Our health insurance premiums that the employer pays is going up in 2021, so you'll see an increase there. I decreased travel and training just a little bit, just because we're more doing online virtual meetings instead of having to travel someplace, pay mileage, pay meals, pay for hotel stay, so we decreased that a little bit. I really decreased the admin services contract due to the website, and we did have, our new computers were installed in 2020, and we paid for him to install those under admin contracts and not capital fund. So we ordered new servers for the office so we can have the new online system to do work orders, have iPads to do the work orders, have applicants be able to pay, or to apply online, change their application if they need to, tenants will be able to pay their rent. And we put all of the IT services for that into the capital fund program. So I decreased that line item with the thought of paying it out of the capital fund program. I did increase legal services just a little bit, just due to the CNA and the RAD conversations that may come up after we get the CNA back in January. I just wanted to have a little extra money in there in case we needed to have those discussions with legal counsel. Um, I left utilities alone as it was in 2020, which is usually what we do when we budget for the following year, because we're hoping to have more occupancy and less utility expense that way, but you just don't know until it happens. So we may have to do a budget revision sometime in 2021 to adjust those expenses. Labor went up just a little bit for 2021, and the majority of that is not having the CARES Act funding. So I had to move that employee back into the operating budget, and that increased our operating expense for labor by only $2,100. Um, materials and other, I decreased that by about $7,000. And kind of talked with facility supervisor, and, you know, we discussed what's on the shelf needs to be used, and if we've got five or six of them, use them up until we order, and then maybe order two or three to replace it, just try to keep some on the shelf but not overstock the shelves. So there's a lot of parts setting there. Unit turnaround, I completely took unit turnaround out because we have more maintenance staff. Staff are doing great on unit turnover, I don't think we'll have to utilize any turnover contracts for 2021. Protective services, other contracts, I decreased that by $4,000 in hopes that our fire alarm system is going to work efficiently next year and not have any increased expenses there. Compensated absence went up $6,300, that's due to one staff member retiring. I did increase payment in lieu of taxes in hopes of us having increased rental income and decreased utility expenses for 2021. Property betterment additions, I decreased that by $1,000. We had some expenses in 2020 for carpet replacement at Carlson Plaza due to just worn-out carpet, or carpet that's been in there since 1975, and it's green and orange. So we have some carpet replacement, but I don't foresee us having as much carpet replacement in 2021 since we've already replaced those carpets in 2020. I did just want to point out on admin salaries, when we were doing the budget, you may notice we added new executive director in there, so we have that per hourly rate in there. When I budgeted for benefits, I budgeted based on the max amount that the housing authority would pay out for those budgets. So if that person takes a family plan, I have budgeted from February 1 through the end of the year for that position. Any questions?
She budgeted for the amount you advertised, the position, the 67,000, is that right?
Yeah, I think it came out to 3401 an hour.
Okay, that's, I just wanted the board to know.
Yeah. And some of that new ED salary, we, I, I am having some of that salary come out of capital fund because we put some capital fund money in there for salaries. So about 10% of that salary is going to go to capital fund, and some of the facility supervisor salary is going to go to capital fund too, about 25%.
And those, that, that money has to be used through the administration of contract for items that are included in the capital fund.
Okay, any questions? I would suggest that we look at the budget maybe on a quarterly basis to do revisions instead of saving it for the end of the year in the future, so that it's less complicated.
Actually, HUD has told us that now we have to do budget revisions as they occur. So you may have 10 budget revisions in a year.
Okay, that's okay, that's okay. Any other questions? I think Mandy's laid it out for us pretty clearly. All right, I call the question.
Linda?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion on the next resolution.
Adam Chair, I move that we approve 2021 merit and COLA increases, which is resolution number 121620 dash C.
In a second. Somebody? Thank you, Livy. Okay. I think this is a Mandy question again, maybe, Mandy girl?
No, actually, it was Joanne.
A Joanne question, okay.
Yeah, I was just noticing that we didn't put a possible motion, we put a recommendation but not a possible motion on. Sorry.
No, I think Phil made it.
Yeah, he did, motion, just fine. So every year, the housing authority generally provides a, at least a COLA and some kind of a merit increase for every employee that reaches a satisfactory or above evaluation. The several things we take into consideration is what other governmental agencies are doing. The only closest thing to us, which is not that close, but it serves a lot of our clients, is the Social Security Administration is providing a 1.3% increase to its recipients this year. However, the city is providing 0% COLA, 0% merit. Same with the county, same with the, what was the other one you told me, Mandy? Okay State, the state. All of those are getting 0% and 0%. Our budget obviously cannot hold much, if anything. It, it's very, this is the first year in all of my tenure and then some, I think that we've ever not recommended a COLA or a merit increase for staff. However, that is our recommendation for this year. However, with that said, the CARES Act does allow for us to provide hazard pay, performance incentives, bonuses, which HUD does not allow bonuses. You can give bonuses, but you have to call them something else, et cetera. It, as you all know, it's been a hard year. And I find it very difficult to tell staff, especially those who have been out in the field, putting themselves at risk, and those that have been in the office tirelessly and, and sometimes putting themselves at risk, meeting with clients when necessary. That, I'm sorry, I know it's been a tough year, but you get nothing. As you know, we've had a, we've had a difficult time retaining staff in some positions. And I think that the staff has done an exceptional job this year overcoming the hurdles and, and adapting to what we have had to adapt to. So I've recommended that we provide a one-time payment of $750 to each employee in lieu of a COLA or a cost of living increase. Mandy, remind me, this is, if we were to give the staff a, a 1% merit increase, it would cost us?
1% merit, no COLA?
No.
It'll cost us around 10,000 for that year.
It would cost us around 10,000 for that year. If you added a COLA to that, it's going to more than double that. So that is my proposal.
And what does that, what does that come to in dollars? 750 a person?
$7,500.
Oh.
It is close to the $10,000 increase. For some employees, that's about what a, what a 1% increase would amount to for them. For other employees, it doesn't come close. You know, for those who are in upper positions or live in here a long time, or whatever. But it is something to say, thank you. I appreciate you stay with us, it's going to get better, and carry on.
And you would do that for them this month or in December?
Yes.
I'm also open to other numbers. That was a number that we could fit into the CARES Act budget. It is, again, money that would be funded by the CARES Act, so does not increase our financial standing in terms of our score, one way or another. So.
Somebody got a comment?
I'm in favor of that, thank you, Joanne, for looking out for our employees. I think it's doable, and I think we should make it work.
Anybody else got an alternative suggestion?
I am in favor of keeping the salary range levels at zero. I voted twice so far, once with the city, for city employees, and once for the Riley County Police Department. To, because, we're not, we're not giving any raises. And, but their, employees are keeping their jobs, they're keeping their benefits. And in some ways, they're lucky to still have jobs, as far as I, as I see this economy. And so I'm not going to, I, I won't be supporting an increase.
But how about this $750 one-time payment?
No, but she's saying she doesn't support it. I'm a zero increase. But that, it depends on the majority of this board, though I'm not saying that that has to be. And I'm one of seven.
It seems, I, I understand, Linda, and I, I agree, times are tough all over. It seems like the upper echelon folks, the two of you and Patrick and maybe Kat, have been here quite a while, and some of our, like, our maintenance workers have not been here that long. So maybe a differential between people who have been here for less than five years, or some number, that they might.
We also want them to stay.
We do, we don't want to lose them, I, I agree with that. But I'm thinking like maybe 500 and 750, or?
I think it's important to say that the, the differential kind of offsets the fact that our lower salaried employees probably could use the benefit of that more so than some of our higher salaried employees, so I think that's an important distinction to make.
Exactly.
I would, I would also ask if, since we kind of base a lot of this on what our peers are doing as well, the city and K-State, you listed several of our peers that are doing things. Are they doing anything in the same that we're aware of? Is there any similar?
Not that I'm aware of. I would almost be in favor of a reverse differential if we were going to do it at all. I mean, it seems to me that the people who are probably making the lower, I mean, if we were going to do a differential, otherwise, I think we'd have to keep it even across the board. Because I think the people who are making the lower salaries are also the ones who are more likely to find themselves in a difficult position with their home lives related to COVID, if that's what our justification is for this. In which case, I would say no differential, just do the same across the board.
I also have to ask, if this is going to be effective this year, in this year's numbers, with our current budget showing a deficit, is there a reason it has to be right now, or could we wait and see in January how this year ends up, and then make a decision to do something similar to this in January if those three items that could potentially dramatically change our, our deficit, this? If those three items that could potentially dramatically change our, our deficit this, this year come to fruition in some capacity?
We could. It wasn't, this was included in the revised budget that we gave you, which I realize shows a deficit now.
But it wouldn't show much of a deficit. If nothing positive happened, this would almost make a break even, if I'm accurate.
No.
$7,500 to $78,000?
Oh, sorry. I, sorry.
That's okay.
So what are we losing if we do the $7,500?
Just CARES Act funding, because that's what it's coming out of.
Right. So the CARES Act funding, is there another place where that money could be used right now?
Well, right now, we're utilizing it for one staff member with unit turnover and I, we have enough funds through the end of December to pay him out of the CARES Act. And then I moved him back into the 2021 budget underneath maintenance. I believe we're stocked up on PPE products and hand sanitizer. They do a really good job if they're at the store and it's there on the shelf, they'll pick it up. So as far as eligible expenses that we can pay for the CARES Act, I think we're pretty well stocked up on PPE and hand sanitizer.
Okay, so really, this is kind of a use it or lose it kind of situation. And it would be beneficial from where the two of you are seated to utilize it in this way?
As it, well, one of the things that kind of led us here, when we started realizing, you know, it's, it's probably not appropriate to provide a COLA or a merit increase is when we hire new employees and we say, okay, this is what our salary range is and when you pass your six-month probation, you're going to get an increase equivalent to the the merit increase for that year. So for the new employees that we have, like three of them, guess what they're going to get? Zero. And one of the things that we have talked about every year, when we have talked about merit and COLA increases, is the importance to not only attract employees, but to retain good employees. And I don't know that any of them will walk out the door if they don't get an increase or a $750 or a $500 or whatever check or any check. I don't know that. If I don't get a COLA or a merit, I'm walking out the door. What I want them to know, and Linda, I appreciate your sentiments that they have a job, they have their benefits and, and what have you. But I don't feel like those guys were misled. We interviewed them and said, yeah, when you pass six months probation, you'll get an increase equivalent to the merit increase. Oh, by the way, it's zero.
So they've not gotten their merit increase?
They haven't passed probation yet.
When does, so if they've not passed probation, why is there a discussion about their merit increase?
Well, because if I were to do their evaluation today, they would pass probation with flying colors. I don't, there's nobody that, here that's not going to pass probation. Unless they leave before probation and, and maybe the board wants to make a stipulation that when they pass probation, that's when they get this. You see what I'm saying? Yes, 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 yes. I understand that. So the merit increase is almost, how many people does that affect?
Two.
Oh, just two. Okay.
Two.
And this is some, this is something that's standard, correct? As long as they pass their probation period, this is, this merit increase is standard?
Yeah.
And what is that percentage usually? 1%?
It's been anywhere between 1 and-
I think 3 is the highest we can see for merit.
Yeah.
And how much would it cost us to just give the merit increase to the people once they pass their probation?
What merit increase? We just, we're asking for a 0% merit increase. So whatever employees get across the board for their merit increase at the time of their evaluate, their annual evaluation, that's what the employees who are on probation get when they come off of probation.
Right.
So if they're on probation at the, at the beginning of the year, when the COLA would go into effect, they would get the COLA. And then when they came off probation, say January, February, whenever, then they would get their merit increase.
But we're doing zero on both?
But we're doing zero on both.
Okay, I'm struggling with that one a little bit. Let me think about that a little more. We can move on. I mean-
Okay, can I, can I ask this? Can we table this till the January meeting?
It's, it's up to the Board of Commissioners.
Can we, can we say, can we go with the 0% COLA and merit, which everybody across the board is doing? The city and the police and the K-State and everybody. And then revisit the one-time additional payment in January when we see how the, the budget revision finalizes? Does that make sense?
I would actually like to table the whole discussion and see if we can table it in January. I'd like to do a little bit more research and have a better understanding and maybe seek out some alternatives for the two that are especially in the position where they would possibly get a merit increase. So I'd like to look at options.
Is it legal for us to, to table until January?
We'll have to do another budget revision.
Jamie, we're getting a lot of feedback. Can you mute? There's a lot of back, Jamie, there's a lot of background noise coming. Your square is lit up all the time, a lot. I don't know, I don't know what's happening, but malfunction or something maybe.
What did you say, Joanne?
We'll have to do another budget revision. Which means we'll have to meet again.
Well, we, you mean in December or in January?
In December.
You're going to have-
We're not going to meet again.
You're going to have to have those budget revisions on automatic. They're going to, I mean, look how, look how big this agency is and the budget is. We talk about it being flexible, but, you know. Just put them on spitfire.
We'll just put it on the monthly agenda.
So, but on the, do we have to have that increase for payroll for any reason by a certain point? I mean, does that impact year-end payroll or is it just budgetary?
It's budgetary.
Okay, it won't affect anybody's actual reviews or payroll effective January?
Uh-uh, don't have any effects there.
If we don't pass it, it won't go anywhere, I guess is what she's saying.
And how, how long do we have to use the CARES money?
June 30th.
Okay.
Is it June 30th?
So do we have to have a motion to table or can I just say we're going to table? I think we need to have a motion and a second and a roll call.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Phil, do that, yeah. So we almost need to vote that down or have it withdrawn. I don't know, I'm just talking.
Phil, will you withdraw your motion?
If, if that's the will of the board, yes.
And Livy was the second? Well, how can we table it if we withdraw it? I'm confused.
Actually, somebody can just move to amend his motion to table the motion.
Somebody want to do that?
Well, can we backpedal for a minute? Did we say that this only affects the, I just want to be clear on what we're tabling, because my understanding was there's only two employees that would be affected by what Kennedy is proposing. And that if we wanted to offset that with what Joanne has proposed in a one-time lump payment, we potentially could do that without taking away the entire approval that we're seeking right now, which is the merit increase. I mean, I, I think we have two separate approvals happening right now. And I don't know if that's what we want to table the whole thing or if we just want to table a portion of it and say we can approve the merit to 0%. So we're consistent with the city and we're consistent with what everybody else is doing.
The motion, the motion is to approve the merit and COLA increase of zero.
And the-
Yes. The other thing is not included in that motion. He, he moved to include, to approve the resolution and the one-time payment is included in the resolution.
Phil's motion included the $750. Because he adapted it from that recommendation and that's what it says. I don't know, somebody-
Is that the point of contention though, Kisha? Like, is that the part you wanted to look at, was just the, the, the one-time payment or the entire COLA and merit discussion?
I just didn't know if there was a way, if there's some sort of existing loophole where the two come off probation, because Joanne said something about a stipulation, if we wanted to do a stipulation. And I wasn't sure what she was talking about, but I know that we're running two hours into the meeting. So I wanted to have an opportunity to talk to her about what she was talking about with that.
The only thing I was saying was that just like the, the probationary employees wouldn't get the, the merit increase at, on January 1, like the other employees who have been here and have been evaluated would, they would not get the merit increase, if there was one, until they pass their probation further into the year, probably January, February, somewhere in there. So you could make the stipulation that they don't get theirs until their $750, until they, they pass their probation. And at that time, they get their $750. That's all I was saying.
Got it. Okay, then I am okay with going forward with the 0% merit and then tabling the discussion about the one-time payment.
And the 0% COLA?
Yes.
Yes.
So just tabling the one-time payment and having discussion about that.
Phil, is that an amendment to the motion? Yes. Is that okay?
Stop that amendment. Bill?
Phil?
Well, I, I think we're dealing with, my understanding is we're dealing with the original motion. And is Kennedy trying to put the other discussion off until our next January meeting?
Yes, the one-time.
The one-time, just put it off until January and then deal with it at that meeting. Is that acceptable to Joanne and Mandy?
Well, I guess, I guess that it is. I mean, it's whatever the wish of the board is. But I, I feel like if there is some, if, if the board doesn't want to approve that one-time payment, then they should just take that motion now and not delay that.
Well, I'm in favor of the one-time payment, so somebody else is going to have to make a motion to exclude that.
I guess my objective wouldn't be to, to withdraw it as an option, but I'd like to see how this year ends, since we're currently operating in a deficit. And, and if I'm wrong in that thinking, I'd love to be told differently, because I would love to see this be a potential if it makes sense financially for our entity, but I have a hard time approving something when we're already at a deficit.
I gotcha.
Especially knowing that if we wait one month and we have to explain this rationale to somebody, we might have a really strong basis based on receiving some income that we don't currently have to spend.
Gotcha.
And I would agree with Jamie.
I just want to clarify, so the, the money that we're paying this out of is the CARES Act. So the money's going to come into our account from me drawing it down and the expense is going to go out. It's a, it's a wash per se, because it's, it's not affecting our bottom line at all. Because the same income is coming in for these checks and the expense is going out. So it's literally a wash from the CARES Act.
So in our, in our year-end budget, you would guarantee that there wouldn't be an additional deficit based on timing of those funds?
Right, because I, if, if you guys would have approved it tonight, my next thing tomorrow morning is to write these checks and it takes two days to draw the money down. So I'll draw the money down and it'll be in the bank account in two days.
For when the money comes back in?
Yes.
From the CARES Act? So there's, because what I don't want to do is administratively put us further in the hole than what we currently would be. I mean, if it's a wash, I can, I would change my opinion on that, because I don't want to, I wouldn't want to risk the, the loss of future use of CARES Act funds if we think that there will be a need for it before June, that this would create or deplete for us. But if it's not going to put our balance sheet or our income statement, sorry, in further deficit, I guess it, it's a moot point.
Is there any other-
But can we use it for something else?
Right.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Like the, the personnel that has been paid, that we moved that one person to the general, I forget. But whatever that staff person that was getting paid with CARES money, could that be rebudgeted for until June or whatever and pay that person from the CARES month?
If we, if we don't write the seven, the $7,500 out of CARES Act and we utilize that for his salary, we can carry him through the middle of March before we would have to move him back into the operating budget for 2021.
So that CARES money can, it can offset money we'd be spending out of the operating budget?
It can be, it can be used for something else.
Oh, man.
That's where I'm getting stuck. Because, I mean, I really want to take care of people as best we possibly can, but if there's another way we can use this money and we're at a deficit?
Yeah.
My thinking, we, my thinking is that we had a tongue lashing from HUD in that letter, citing us basically with mismanagement. And I think this just sends the wrong signal to HUD, because they're going to be, they're watching us carefully, it seems to me. And we're under the gun to be very accountable. So that's another, I appreciate Jamie talk, say, you know, talking about the, the bottom line at the end of this calendar year, fiscal year.
And Linda, I, I appreciate that, I do. We did talk with HUD about this, because we didn't want a tongue lashing because of it. However, it was the financial analyst that has now left HUD that we talked with it about, or talked with about it. So I can't say that we've talked to the financial analyst that's there now about it. So, and-
What are we going to do? I think, I think we've tongue lashed this to death. What are we going to do?
I would still like to table it until January, but also, I mean, just, I would feel better tabling it into January so that we- I would feel better tabling it into January so that we can see what's happening with our finances at that point.
The 0% COLA and merit and the 750, or just the 750?
Just the 750. Yeah, as Jamie and Livy have pointed out, I really struggle with knowing that that, oh, Linda, too. Those funds could be used for something else. But I'm also struggling with the fact that there are people who are deserving of their merit increase who will not, who may not, well, who will not receive that merit based on, I mean, these are real people and these are real lives, right? And so, uh, I'd at least like to table it until January. Uh, hopefully, we'll have more funds that we can work with and we can justify it easily. But right now, I have a hard time doing that.
I'd advise job is protecting our labor force as well. That, that's a part of the whole, the whole scheme here, and that's where I'm coming from.
I, I definitely see that point as valid, Phil. That's why I'm actually struggling with the, that's why, that, I mean, that's why I'm, that's why I'm struggling.
So in order to accomplish that, either we have to vote down Phil's motion and make a motion about the 0 and 0, and say we're gonna table the other until January.
Why don't you just amend, I think, I think Kennedy offered an amendment to Phil's motion earlier to approve the 0 and 0 COLA and merit and table the issue of the performance incentive pay until the January meeting.
If Phil will accept that, then we, and Livy will accept that as the second. Okay, so that is now the motion, is that we're going to approve the 0 and 0 for COLA and merit increases and table the discussion of the one-time payment until January. And I call that question.
Linda?
Yeah.
Jan?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a suggestion. D and E, the write-offs, are something we standardly do every year. That's the write-off of the checks and the write-off of the receipts, I think. So I would like, I would like to have one motion covering both of those items.
Madam Chair, I move item D, the Approval of Tenants' Accounts Receivable Write-Off Resolution Number 121620-D, and item E, which is Approved Accounts Payable Check Write-Off Resolution Number 121620-E.
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion on those two items? They're pretty straightforward.
HUD told us to do it, so we're doing it.
Is, if, if there are no questions, I'm just gonna call the question.
Linda?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Which takes us to item F, under New Business.
Madam Chair, I approve, I move to approve Resolution Number 121620-F, Adopting the Public Housing Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program Interfund Transfer Policy.
You second.
I second.
Linda, seconds. Are there any questions about this issue?
You want to frame it, Joanne, or Mandy?
As, speaking of the action plan from HUD, I had an email, a phone call from our, from Doug, who is our new Patty. And they did, wanted a copy of our interfund transfer policy, and I thought, I think we have a written policy. And he said, well, if, if you don't have one, if you get one developed and approved by your board, we can check that off your action plan right away. I said, well, okay, but I don't have an approved action plan. He said, yeah, it's in the works. I said, well, okay, so we'll get ahead of the action plan. I developed the policy, sent it to him, he sent it back, said it looks perfect. I said, okay, I'll take it to the board for approval. And basically, all it's saying is whenever the public housing program pays Section 8 expenses as a matter of accounting procedure, by the 10th of the following month, the Section 8 program will reimburse the public housing program.
I didn't remember this, that requirement for a policy being in the action plan. I know, I wanted to, I know they, I know they wanted you to fix it. But I didn't see that there was a plan that they were requiring, or that we were gonna do one.
Yeah, they said, yeah, that's what he said, this would be our plan to fix it.
That's what he said, okay. I'll, I'll check the action plan and see if I can find it. Thank you.
Well, this is where they made an accusation. And so this is to solve the accusation because the accusation was unfounded.
Yeah.
This is a way of making it official.
Yeah, they were saying we operated against our policy and we didn't have one.
No, they said we mismanaged funds.
They said we mismanaged funds, and this is something that all housing authorities do all the time. So now we have an official policy, we're covered. Does anybody have any questions about that? I call the question.
So.
Linda?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
I hope HUD takes the time to watch our videos.
Okay, so, under New Business G, under New Business G, it says public hearing. We're not having a public hearing, so I'm gonna, right? It says, under New Business, all it says is public hearing annual plan.
Yes.
It doesn't say anything else. I don't have a document following that.
Oh. Yeah, yeah, you have.
And then H is approval of the 2021 annual plan, so that's in H.
Item G is public hearing, item H is the approval.
All right, but, so, how are we having a public hearing?
Because they announced it. And it's in, on our agenda, there's just no explanation, but.
So do we just pass on to H?
No, you have to actually open the public hearing, see if there's any public comments, which there won't be, because there's nobody present unless somebody from the, the commission has a public comment.
Okay, so I'm opening the public hearing. Are there any comments? Hearing none? I closed the public hearing.
Thank you, perfect.
And I moved on to H, approval. I need a, I need a, a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the 2021 Annual Plan Resolution Number 121620-G.
Okay, do we need to have a conversation about this?
We need a second. I, I will do the second.
Thank you, Linda.
To get it moving.
Do we need to, what do we, I don't know what we need to do, other than approve it?
This is a document that we do every single year. Um, generally, we don't have to approve, we don't have to send it into HUD, but because we're troubled, we do. Have to send it into HUD. It basically described, it's a very short document, actually, that has a lot of attachment. And it's asking about our plans for the coming year. And the progress we've made on our goals from last year. And there's a section in the, in the plan for every single one of the checkmark, checkmark items that you'll see starting on page 1 of 6 of the annual PHA plan. Well, I'm sorry, the checkbox will start until page 2. And, um, asking about revisions that we've made to our policy, plans for converting to RAG, repositioning or converting to RAG. If we had any audit findings and what they were. And asking about our, our five-year action plan for the capital fund program. Which, because we haven't been awarded 2021 capital fund, um, program funds yet, we are allowed to just reference them to the last approved five-year plan. So, um,
For like 100 pages here.
Yes, and then you'll see on pages 4 and 5, there are a list of documents that we need to check if we have revised them. On page 5, there are certain documents that they want to have attached to the annual plan. I have done that behind each, behind a cover sheet for every single one of them. I don't know if, um, you all have had a, a opportunity to review all of these very interesting, fun, reading documents. And they start with operation and management. And it needs to be nothing, excuse me, short, of a, a very short description behind every single one, because they have to read these for a lot of houses, the 40. And, and we, we did include the, the statutory and regulatory waivers. And a whole lot of, of other information. We did include our audit as well. Eric Cattell reviewed it, we have to have a concurrent from our, either our city or our state local, our state official, that it is, um, matches up with our local jurisdiction's goals for affordable housing. Eric Cattell has signed that certification and returned it to us after reviewing the document.
Does anybody have any questions about anything in that many pages of all of that? As Joanne is getting, reaching the end of her limit here. If, if no one has any questions, I, I think we should just call the question.
I would, I would say that I'm on the Board of the Area Agency on Aging. And they also must submit a, a five-year plan and a annual update to, to, they have to certify that each year they're making progress and citing that five-year plan. So it is a standard, and there doesn't seem to be anything in here that is any different than what I see in those other, that, those reports. I am glad to see the things at the back talking about the, um, physical needs of all of the properties. And I, that is not what this, uh, those people were here for, for December 1st. That information is not gonna be available to us till January, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on all of that? Then I call the question.
Linda?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
Okay, the, the last item. We have two executive sessions here. I would ask, have any applications come in for the executive director position?
Yes.
How many?
We have, we have three right now.
Okay.
We have three right now, and I've had a couple of people contact me. Uh, so, we potentially will have at least two more, is my, at least.
Okay. I, so, I'm supposed to see those, and who else? Jamie?
Livy.
Livy. Okay, if you want to forward those over, I guess, to, to us.
I was thinking about setting up a Google Drive. I was actually going to email you and find out whether or not, I'm thinking about setting up a Google Drive. I didn't want to inundate you with sending one at a time. Because that can get annoying in your email. So.
Okay, so will I be able to manage that? Because I've never done a Google Drive thing.
Yes, it should be fairly easy. It should be able, you should be able to do the link.
Okay.
And if not, I can talk to you. I mean.
Okay, talk me through?
Yep.
Okay, because I, we haven't looked at those, so I don't know that we need to have an executive session to discuss them.
No, because we're not even supposed to really deal with those until.
Who's digging?
That would be me, until January. That's my computer.
Okay. All right, so that handles one of those, and then, Joanne? I don't, I don't know what we want to do. I sent everybody the executive director's evaluation. So you all saw that, how I put that all together. I, I don't know, do we need to recess to discuss that? I don't think we do, do we? Is there any reason to go into an executive session about that? It's all there.
When did you send it? You compiled it and sent it to us?
Yesterday.
Yesterday? Well, yesterday was a blur with the city commission meeting from hell. Okay.
I can send it to you again if you want.
Yeah, would you mind?
I, I can't do it from here.
I'll search. Okay, just send it to me. I appreciate it.
Okay. I, I don't, why, I, I don't, I don't know why we would need an executive session. I, Joanne probably would like to have an opportunity to respond, but you would not be involved in the executive session. Would you?
Well, I could be.
Well, it seems silly if we're all gonna be at the executive session except Mandy.
I, I, I think that, Joanne, if, if I'm understanding, you would like us to go into executive session and include you. That does two things. It, one, has Mandy step out of the room, and two, it stops the recording. So is it the case that you want to go into executive session with us, Joanne?
I, yeah, I do have a couple of questions and a couple of comments.
Well, then, if we can go in, we need a motion to go into executive session. How, how long do you think you need? It is now 8:07.
I probably need no more than 10 minutes.
Okay, so let's do a motion to go till 8:30, just in case that, somebody.
I move, I move that we go into executive session until 8:30.
Second.
Okay, so Mandy, if you would just leave us for a bit.
Yep, I gotta call roll first. Linda? Linda?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
And Jamie? Yes. She's gonna put her.
She's gonna put it on pause, the recording on pause.
Okay.
All right, we're back recording.
I believe.
Do we have to, we don't have to have a motion to come out of session, do we? We just come out?
It just expires after.
It expires, okay. So the only action that I think we need to, to say is thank you to Joanne for her many years of service. And I don't think any further action needs to be taken. Anybody have anything?
Yes.
How many years have you been?
Thirty-three.
Thirty total, uh-huh. In the last, what, 15 as executive director?
Yes.
Uh-huh, okay.
I'll be too much shy of 34 years.
Wow. All right, I think that we've about exhausted ourselves for this evening. I wish you all Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope you don't go anywhere, and you stay safe and hold your lives together. There is a vaccine, it's coming. It's coming to town. But that doesn't mean you can't, you have to, you have to wear your mask. Don't be good.
We extended.
We'll talk to you tomorrow.
We extended the mask ordinance to March 31st.
Awesome, that was great.
April 1st.
I was happy to hear that.
All right, so you guys have a meeting tomorrow. Joanne's gonna talk to Linda before that meeting to get everything straightened out.
I'll tell you at 10 o'clock, Linda.
Right.
Okay.
I've got it on my calendar.
And I don't know, I think it's time to go eat or something.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, everybody. It's been a long, hard meeting. We did a lot of work. Okay, bye.
Bye.